Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we always do, I will ask that we take a moment of reflection so that we can keep communities and countries and neighbors and friends and family in our thoughts in a time of needs. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Bowman if she would lead that. So let's take a moment of reflection, please. Thank you. If you all please rise and join us for the pledge.
The pledge.
Allegiance. Cheers to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Just one, Mayor. Under item A of the consent agenda, if we can separate the minutes of August 12th and August 20th, so I can vote on those separately. Form of motion, please.
Second.
Motion in a second. So you're going to, we're going to vote on the 12th and the 20th separately, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six oh. Thank you very much. Hearing no other adjustments to the agenda, I will close this section of the meeting. We now go into public hearings. We have a rezoning request by DW LLC, property owner and applicant, to rezone property located on the north side of Brammer Lane Northeast and adjacent to the east side of 2,500 Brammer Lane Northeast, consisting of approximately 2.57 acres, all on tax parcel 501-1-3D, and a portion of tax parcel 80-5-1, and 501-1-13D1, and 13F. From agriculture to I-2 general industrial, the property is designated as industrial in the future land use map of the 2013 comprehensive plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Steve Simonas of Balzer and Associates, 80 College Street, here in Christiansburg. Good evening. Just a quick presentation this evening on this rezoning request. Our clients, Mr. Duncan and Mr. Woods are here this evening if you have any questions for them. As the mayor mentioned, this is a 2.57 acre piece of property in town, right at the end, at the terminus of Brammer Lane. The property, you'll see it, actually Christine, I'm going to grab. So the property we're looking at is right here. So this is Sawyer Bus Sales, right here on the left. So the property are these strange-looking parcels you see here, just at the, as you're heading down the end of Brammer, right there. The property behind is also owned by my clients, but that's property within the jurisdiction of Montgomery County. So this is right on the town of Christiansburg, town of Christiansburg line. So it's a little bit zoomed in. This parcel, or this property, has been assembled in various parcels over the last year or two as boundary line adjustments and some work with VDOT to vacate a portion of right-of-way that was actually part of the interstate when some of that work was done in the off-ramp there. That's been done, so we exist kind of as one big parcel we're looking at right now. If this is approved and we move through with our site plan, we'll vacate this interior lot line, so we have one solid parcel within this area here. But this is the area we're looking at for the development itself. So what we're proposing is a 9,000-square-foot warehouse building within this zoning district. So the comprehensive plan of the town shows this area as an industrial on the future land use map. So what we're asking for is in compliance with that comp plan. We have industrial zoning on the left here, obviously with Sawyer Bus Sales. The other parcels in town adjacent to us, again, are also within that industrial, future land use. But proposing a 9,000-square-foot warehouse industrial building, two access points off of Brammer Lane right now that would allow trucks to come into the property and not have to back up and turn around within there. Stormwater management areas out here in front. We currently have a mass grading plan that has gone through the town and been approved, so you may see some dirt out there moving. So that's just a mass grading plan, not the actual site plan itself. We wouldn't be able to apply for that site plan until the rezoning is put through. We do have public water out on the site right now, within the Brammer Lane right-of-way that we would tie into. There is not sanitary sewer. There's no town sewer out here, so we would be using a septic area, a septic system for that, and you can see that in this little box area right there. We have had a soil scientist go out and locate an area where, that will be sufficient for the uses that we'd have in here. Again, this would be industrial or warehouse use. It could be leased by one tenant for the full 9,000 feet. It could be split up into a couple of bays. Property owners themselves will maintain the property, so that would include the stormwater management, the parking lot, all the grounds. We're figuring somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe, you know, maybe 30 employees at the very high end. That's a pretty high estimation, but the way we came up with that, we wanted to make sure we had enough parking shown depending on who might go in here, and we backed into a number based on this zoning district and the use that we're proposing. It's one space per two employees. So when we do the math, we backed into about a 30, around 36, you know, potential employees that we have in there with the 18 spaces we're showing. We do have a dumpster shown, so that would be screened to town standards. Stormwater would be designed to town and state standards as well. We do have our setback shown, 40-foot setback up against the residential zoning behind us in the county, the Mr. Duncan and Mr. Wood zone. The rest of it, again, 30-foot right-of-way setback and 15-foot parking setback off of Brammer Lane. So again, it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and we're looking forward to moving forward with the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions council has. And we did have a unanimous approval from Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago as well.
Comments? Questions?
I like that it's part of the comprehensive plan. Sometimes it's very difficult to have things that actually follow the comprehensive plan. And so I'm happy to see that.
This one fits right in.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. As far as the warehouse and everything, it seems like you are going to have employees on there for the different shops, is that correct?
Potentially, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So it's not going to be just to storage things?
There could be. I mean, the industrial zoning district would allow storage by right. It would allow an industrial use by right. So we're not excluding any by-right uses within that zoning district.
Where is the stormwater pond for this?
Right here. Right here in the front. It's a fairly large area that we have to have, but it's, you know, the lot itself was fairly wooded. So when we take it from a wooded site to a developed site, we were required to have a pretty large stormwater management facility.
Okay.
So we had already worked with the town on how that needed to be engineered.
Okay. Perfect.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing. We have a conditional use permit request by Lauren Ashley Elizabeth Potts and Dustin Storm Potts, property owners and applicant, to allow for a single-chair beauty salon, beauty parlor as a major home occupation on property located at 450 Hemlock Street Northeast, a .331-acre tract parcel 529-19-13 in the R2 Residential District. Property is designated as residential in the family use map of 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue?
Hello, my name is Lauren Potts, and I'm here, I live at 450 Hemlock Street, and I just want to get the approval of getting a home salon. It would be a one-chair beauty salon. I do have exterior access from my house, so it'd have its own private entrance, its own bathroom, so it'd be completely separate from my actual dwelling. It's still in the house, but nobody's going to go in my personal living space. But I'm here to answer any questions. If you have any questions about parking, it'd be off-street parking. But yeah, that's all I have. I'm just looking to move it home. I have a little boy, and I think it'd be easier to have the mom life and the business life balance at home, if I could work from home.
Will this work be done by appointment only or walk-ins?
So I'm already, so I already run a business in downtown Christiansburg off of Roanoke Street, and I'm already appointment-only. So I'd only have one client in my salon at a time.
And it will be only you running the?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'd be the only person in the salon. I don't have any employees.
Okay.
Okay. And I believe that, I believe that you are approved for a sign of, is it two square feet of signage that can go on your house, is that correct? I think I read that somewhere ago. That is correct.
Yeah. I wouldn't have a sign in my front yard, so when you'd pull down my driveway, it would be around the back. You'd enter from the back. So I would have a sign on the glass door, but I don't plan to have a sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, as Steve Simonas and Mr. Duncan and Mr. Woods know, and I'll tell you, we will not act on this until the following council meeting. All right. That concludes our public hearings. We have the consent agenda. Under item A, I will ask for approval of the minutes of 12, August 12, 2025.
Make a motion to?
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That's six oh. And the August 20, 2025 work session?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That's four oh and two. Thank you. We have the bill list, and set a town council public hearing for October 28, 2025, for the rezoning request by Roger Woody, registered agent for RWJW Properties LLC, applicant and property owner, to rezone property located at 300 Kimball Lane Southwest, approximately 37.987-acre tax parcel 557-A-20, from A Agriculture to R1 Single Family Residential. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map of the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan dated 2013.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Abstain.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That's four oh and two. Thank you. We have the bill list, and set a town council public hearing for October 28, 2025, for the rezoning request by Roger Woody, registered agent for RWJW Properties LLC, applicant and property owner, to rezone property located at 300 Kimball Lane Southwest, approximately 37.987-acre tax parcel 557-A-20, from A Agriculture to R1 Single Family Residential. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map of the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan dated 2013.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Very good. That is six oh. And so, if I could ask Councilman Jenkins to meet me in the front of the council table. as a member of the town council. He and his wife Annie are moving to Richmond, Richmond, Virginia due to their employment. So I would like to take a second to read a proclamation that I have drafted in honor of Casey's time on council. Whereas Casey Jenkins has served the town of Christiansburg through outstanding professional commitment to the community as a town of Christiansburg council member from January 1, 2022 to August 26, 2025. And whereas Casey Jenkins graduated from Virginia Tech in 2014 with a Bachelor of Arts in Communication and a double minor in English and Philosophy. And whereas Casey Jenkins is also employed as the Events Committee Coordinator for the town of Christiansburg from 2018 to February 2020. And whereas Casey Jenkins was Executive Director of the Blacksburg Partnership from February 2020 to May 2021. And whereas Casey Jenkins was Executive Director of the Montgomery Museum of Art and History in Christiansburg from June 21 to January 25. And during that time, he was awarded the 2023 Distinguished Nonprofit Leader Award from the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Casey Jenkins has served on numerous committees and boards, including Central Business District Committee, Town Bike Way/Walkway Committee, Public Arts Advisory Board, and an alternate to the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Casey Jenkins has been vital, has been vital to important projects such as the Christiansburg Farmers Market, Downtown Events, and the Christiansburg Huckleberry Park. And whereas Casey Jenkins, three-plus years as a town council member, he has helped lead the town through significant growth, through effective planning, budgeting, and financing, and has helped provide for the health and the safety of the general public and general welfare of the town and its citizens. Casey Jenkins' example will continue to have a lasting impact to the community for years to come. Whereas it is my honor as Mayor of the town of Christiansburg, and with the blessing of the Christiansburg Town Council meeting in regular session on August 26, 2025, to formally recognize Casey Jenkins for over three years of service as a town council member for the town of Christiansburg, and to thank him for his dedication to our community. Casey?
No, I'll save it till the end.
I also wanted to present Casey with a small token of our appreciation for your time with the town. We have a nice desk clock, mantle clock, whatever, and I would like to read the inscription if I can. Casey Jenkins, for your service to the town January 1, 2022 through August 26, 2025. As you move ahead in your career, always remember that you leave behind the legacy of achievement and dedication that will not be forgotten. The town of Christiansburg is fortunate to have worked alongside you, and honored to have had you as one of our, on our team. We proudly celebrate and thank you for the years of service and dedication you have given to the town of Christiansburg and its citizens.
Thank you so much.
Casey?
Congratulations. And I don't know who got that pot, they've got to get bigger pril on the bottom. That's not trying, those are more working, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I was like, I'll give them one. Sure. There we go. Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. If you would like to address council, please come forward to the podium, name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Chris Waltz, 1370 Reebok Street. I want to talk about a couple of things. The town manager position that you're discussing tonight. It seems this process is being kind of rushed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, but you were the interim town manager without an assistant for over a year. You have an election coming up where definitely two, but possibly four seats at that table of seven are going to be different. Sounds like a good team-building exercise for the new council to make the final decision on the town manager. It's my opinion. And Casey, good luck up in Richmond.
Thank you.
I don't want to envy you, I'll be honest. And also, you have his vacancy on there, and I'd just like to say, I'd like for you all to consider me for the, to fill in till the, into the election, or the end of the year. Or the end of the election, and then appoint the highest-vote getter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no one, we'll close citizens' comments, committee reports. Street committee met tonight, didn't they?
We did. The street committee, you know, we have citizens that usually contact us about their concerns and stuff like that. So we, as a street committee, decided to come away, I'm going to use the term group, because I don't know what else we're calling right now, of getting citizens to come and meet with us on a regular basis, you know, to give us our input. And another set of fresh ideas, because right now, to be honest, if you're a street committee, it's kind of running, we don't run into Rick Walkers, we've tried everything. So maybe by having citizens come in with fresh ideas, it would help us to help them. So once again, we're calling it a group right now because we haven't come up with official title. And we do have some citizens that are showing, they are interested in joining this group. We have, what, five people that said they would love to do it. So once again, I just want to, we're doing this to keep the council informed of what we would like to do as a?
Street committee.
Yes, the committee. So that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions.
I actually think it's a really good idea to do that, especially because most people know we definitely have a lot of traffic lights in Christiansburg. But, you know, one of the things that I think is interesting, even on one of the posts that was posted, I guess by Christine this week, as far as the farmers market goes for the future, there were things about, talking about, you know, some of the streets, how, you know, to maybe get rid of some lights, or this, or that, or whatever. And now we think that three heads think better than two, and two heads think better than one, so I am all open for that. That's really cool.
Good, good. All right, thank you. Any other committees that have met during the last few weeks? Hearing none, I will close committee reports. Discussion and action by Mayor and Council. Town Council appointment of Brad Stipes as Town Representative and Dr. N.L. Bishop, at-large representative to the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport Authority, Board of Directors for a four-year term from September 1, 2025 to August 31, 2029.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. I will say that Mr. Stipes and Mr. Bishop are both here tonight. So are there any comments or questions?
Yes. I would love to see when, I'm grateful that you guys are here. Thank you for your service to the community, and I'm grateful that you're still serving in some way, shape, or form. But I do wanted to find out a couple of things. How many times do you guys meet a year?
We meet, we meet once a month on the second Wednesday of each month, or second Tuesday of each month, and three thirty.
Are those open to the public?
Absolutely.
Where are they at?
They're at the airport itself.
Oh, cool, cool.
And they know can you come and, you run the lot, we've got a lot going on out there.
Yeah.
We have, also have some committees as well. I have, since I'm a civil engineer, I serve on this construction committee.
Yeah.
And there's a lot, you know, there's, we're wrapping up a master plan, but there's going to be a public meeting for that, I think, Dr. Bishop in November, a second public meeting. And then there are several hangars being built, one owned by the airport, one owned by a company here in Christiansburg, which I can't talk about. So there's a lot, you know, there's just a lot going on there. And Dr. Bishop, what committees do you serve on?
This is very good. I think we're the construction, because we are all from the city. And also, I'll say that the airport, the town of Christiansburg is 25% owner.
Yeah.
There's four jurisdictions, each with one representative. I'm serving you on that committee. Dr. Bishop is the at-large member that all four endorse, but we have two board members that are residents of Christiansburg.
That's really cool. That's very cool.
Montgomery County, Blacksburg.
Very good. Oh, I'm sorry.
And?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, as far as, like, I know that you, when you're serving council, you send a couple of pictures from time to time about different airlines flying to Christiansburg. I would love to see more of those updates if they're ever available. And obviously, a lot of us probably did not know that, you know, this were open to the public. But if you guys can send us some updates about what's taking place at the airport and things like that, that would be awesome for us to see.
I can have Mr. Holt, he's the airport director, come and make a presentation in regards to what type of, like, a service flights they have.
That would be awesome. Thank you, I appreciate that.
He's here last year.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's always good to have a recap, you know?
Air traffic is way up, you know, last, since the airport runway extension was completed in 2022, the debt fuel sales have doubled. There's a lot more air traffic. And there are several corporations here in the town that are using that, and it's really exciting to see that. And as Dr. Bishop would say, all the puzzle pieces come together.
Any chances of the airport being able to grow any bigger than that as far as a more commercial traffic?
There are no plans, there are private jets that come in and out of there, quite frankly, but there are no plans, we have no ambition, or the present board has no ambition to become a commercial competitor. We complement our airport in Roanoke, and we have a niche with corporate, corporate and civil, general civil. There, if anyone, another nice thing, if anyone has an interest in becoming a pilot, they have pilot training lessons there. But there's no, there's no, there's nothing in our master plan or any discussion about becoming commercial, any more than the, I think there's three, like, net jets, there's other than the private corporate jet services, no large amount.
Carriers.
Carriers, like. Thank you.
So does, do you guys have, like, a pilot classroom in Virginia Tech as well, too? Or is there any other organization that is helping with the Virginia Tech Airport as far as that goes to teach classes for pilots?
Well, they have, they do, they do have pilot lessons there, but they're, we don't have, like, a full-time trainer.
Yeah.
The airport directors are pilot. But there are people that are trained to license people with private air travel, so, but it's not full-time services.
Oh, okay.
And if they're interested in becoming a pilot, they would hook you up with those lessons. And I think there is, I think the airport itself has a plane there, so that it can be used for training purposes and stuff like that, I believe.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, guys, for your service.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Well, since I'm kind of one of the two men, I'm going to abstain.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is five oh and one abstention. Thank you. The mayor's appointment to Reagan Smith to the Recreation Advisory Commission as student representative for a one-year term, September 1, 2025 through August 31, 2026. Ms. Smith was unable to attend. Something came up at the last minute. She has promised she will come to our next, our next council meeting to be recognized.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments? Questions?
Can you say she is coming next time?
She'll come next time, yes. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That's five oh one. Thank you. Resolution of the town council, of town of Christiansburg, approving the town's participation in proposed direct settlement of opioid-related claims against the Sackler family, and directing the town manager to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the town's participation in this settlement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Questions?
Yes, please. I know that as a town, we are unable to get any money once this settles, but I want to find out, do we have something already in the planning for how much money we would like to get from the county, how we would like to get that shared? Or are there any discussions about this taking place right now? Because I hear there's going to be a lot of money.
The, the county isn't obligated to share, although they are basically supposed to expend some of the money for opioid abatement, and it can be a lot of things, it can be education. Um, the opioid, I guess, the, uh, Near Valley, um, ecosystem group that we had speak, they're receiving a portion of the funding, so that, that, they were here, I guess, a few meetings ago.
Yeah.
So that's where a portion of the money is going.
But I did hear from some of the news media, talking about the towns were requesting through letters and different venues, to be able to get some of this money. So they are able to share it with the town if they wanted to?
Uh, yes, they could.
Okay, so is there any way we can have a discussion of that very soon?
We, we can ask.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is 6-0. A resolution of the town council, the town of Christiansburg, approving the town's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Alverden, Amneal, Apotex, Hempka, Indivor, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus, and directing the town manager to execute these documents necessary to effectuate the town's participation in this settlement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comments?
I guess you're getting a lot of this help, too, from the chief of police, is that correct, Randy?
Uh, the chief does participate in a group with the county sheriff in regards to opioid money.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Discussion of the NAACP banquet sponsorship and attendance.
I make a motion that we pay our own way for this.
Second.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
To ma, to pay, I make a motion for us, as town council members, to pay our own way, if we want to participate. I don't think it should be up to the, to the people in the town to actually pay for our dinners.
We have a motion and a second. Now, this is, does not include a table sponsor at all, we're just, if we're going to go, paying ourselves.
We should pay, I mean, I was looking at the numbers, we were bronze last year, it was $800 for the table, but they are also asking, if you want to go for the dinner, $75 a person. Uh, if we have those eight people going in for that table, that would be $600. And there is also options where you can actually donate $100 or more to poor persons. So I will say that if that was the case, and I wanted to donate to the organization, that I can definitely pay out of my own money to do that.
All right. Any other comments?
I just need to clarify, your motion again, please.
My motion is for us to pay individually for this, instead of the town having to pay for us to go for this dinner.
Okay.
So if we purchase individual tickets, uh, decide to give us a table to sit to, at together?
No.
So.
They're, they're, they can make it happen, it has happened in the past, right?
No, they haven't.
Well, not with the town, but other people can do that.
No.
I couldn't guarantee that the seats would be together.
So, I, I mean, I would be in favor of us sponsoring a table, supporting the organization, and just reimbursing for our ticket. I'm, I mean, I'm fine with that as council members, and then you providing those tickets to employees.
That's a different motion, let's act on Mrs., Mrs. Hicks and Ms. Bowman's motion that we do not sponsor a table, and that if council goes, we pay our own way. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Nay.
Councilman Jenkins?
Abstain.
Councilman Wilson?
Abstain.
It's what?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it is two to two, I will vote, uh, nay also. Now, is there a motion with appendages to sponsor, for the banquet sponsorship in attendance?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we sponsor a table of eight at the bronze level, and then if any council member wishes to attend and bring their spouse, that they pay for their own ticket, or reimburse the town for their own ticket.
I think that table reserves eight spots, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, so the, the motion is to sponsor a table, uh, and the attending council members will reimburse the town the cost of their tickets for the event.
So just to clarify, that will be, oh, are we under discussion? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, are we?
I'll, I'll second to get on the table.
There we are.
I'll second, Tanya.
Discussion now.
We're in a discussion now. Good, okay.
Okay, so just to make sure, if we go individually and we just buy the tickets, it will be $75 a person, it will be $100 a person, it will be $200 for the couple if you desire to go.
I mean, I, I would think we would, um, the town is sponsoring that table, so my thought is, you, we would reimburse the $75 for the ticket for ourselves and our spouse.
That would be $100 a person, that would be $200, because the bronze level is a $100.
Yeah, that would be, $75 per person is, is what I think we should reimburse the cost of the ticket for us to attend.
But it's $800 for the table of eight.
Yes, but it's a, yes, but it's a table reservation, it's a sponsorship beyond, so it's eight tickets included, but it's a sponsorship of a table beyond the cost of eight tickets, um, at the bronze level, so that you can have your organization recognized, and your organization can sit together, and your organization is part of the sponsors of the event. So a portion of the cost of the table is to sponsor the event as a bronze-level sponsor. And I don't think we need to reimburse the town for sponsoring the event.
Okay.
And I, you know, once again, it doesn't hurt for the town to get out there and show that they do sponsor different organizations. A lot of people don't know that we do, and I can kind of agree with reimbursing, but no, I think we should re, like you say, at least sponsor a table, that $800.
And I just want to say, I'm going to continue to abstain, as this is my last day, so that will, abstention will continue.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to say that I don't think it's, um, the job of town council to use taxpayer money to go to an event that is not, uh, related to our position, so I, I don't think we should be doing that as a sponsor. I believe that if everybody wants to go, they should pay their own way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Abstain.
Councilman Wilson?
Abstain.
I will vote aye. So we will sponsor council and guests, will reimburse the town the cost of the tickets. We'll go from there. Thank you very much. Staff reports, town manager.
I'll just, uh, remind council that VML is at Hotel Roanoke on October 12th through the 14th, and it will actually end that Tuesday, which is a council meeting night. Um, typically, we cancel the meeting of VML, although it's typically on the other side of the state.
Yeah.
Uh, this one is in Roanoke, and I believe the program ends around noon, so I would think that we would be able to, to meet that night, I'm assuming you want to keep that meeting date.
I, I think so.
Okay.
How much staff do we have on the agenda? Is that for when, again?
Uh, it's, uh, it would be the October 14th council meeting.
Oh.
And I'll just point out that November 4th and 11th are holidays, and also, the November 25th meeting is the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, basically, the holidays would be Election Day and Veterans Day. Um, so that would basically, if you canceled those, the meeting on the holiday, and you canceled the meeting the week of Thanksgiving, you would effectively not have any meetings in November. Would you want to meet November 18th? That's the third Tuesday.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And, and cancel the
11th.
Yes.
The 11th and the
And the 4th.
20, the 25th.
Okay.
And our, well, I was going to say, what about the work session, but we could probably wait until later.
Yeah.
Okay. And just point out that town hall, the Rec Center and Aquatic Center will be closed this coming Monday for Labor Day holiday. That's all I have.
Mr. Broden?
Nothing to report, mayor.
Ms. Bolt?
Yes, I have something to report. Okay, um, at the request of town council's, um, recent work session, we wanted to give just a brief, very brief recap of our work session and some of the information that we discussed, and then I also wanted to share, um, the surveys that we came up with, per the request of council. Um, so in regards to the farmers market, we did, um, decide that we were going to continue with the farmers market at Christiansburg Huckleberry Park for the 2025 season, finish out the season, and then decide where to go from there. At our, um, work session, we discussed some of the different strengths and weaknesses of the location at Christiansburg Huckleberry Park, of the location when it was at the Recreation Center parking lot, and then the future location, um, of downtown Christiansburg. We talked about whether or not we were interested in moving forward with the location on Hickock Street, um, if the farmers market was a viable idea moving forward at all, um, if we wanted it downtown, and maybe somewhere else other than Hickock Street. We discussed, um, grant money that we had received, how much we would have to pay back. Um, I'm not going to go into too much detail, because most of you were there, but I would encourage you, if you weren't, to recap the, um, previous work session for all of the details. A couple of thoughts really quickly that we discussed then and are still relevant today. Christiansburg Town Council's original directive was, with creation of a farmers market, was the market to be downtown. Christiansburg Town Council voted to relocate the farmers market to the Recreation Center at their November 10, 2020, meeting as a temporary measure due to Hickock Street work. The last directive of Christiansburg Town Council was that the farmers market be located downtown, and staff understands that the decision regarding the farmers market begins, or belongs, excuse me, to town council. So at this point, we have a couple of questions, um, that we need town council to decide on. Um, the first two are statements, the Christiansburg Farmers Market will remain at the park for 2025. Town staff will publish a public survey and a private survey for small business owners, and, um, the questions are, council will use the surveys, survey results from the community to determine, should the Christiansburg Farmers Market move forward? Should the Christiansburg Farmers Market move forward on Hickock Street, a different downtown location, or somewhere other than downtown? So that's what we're waiting on right now, um, and then I'm actually going to take the microphone, so I can show you guys the surveys. the first survey that we'll take a look at, um, is for the public, so this would be communicated through the, um, website, through our social media channels, um, and then we would discuss maybe some other ways, depending on what events look like, to try and encourage engagement. Um, we don't have long to do it, because town councils requested that we have that information before the next town council meeting, so that we can make a decision, um, in regards to the ARC grant that we received, which is kind of in limbo, waiting to see if we're going to continue on Hickock Street. So, um, should the market continue? Where should it be located? What is the value? So the first question, do you live or work in Christiansburg? This is a mandatory question, all of the questions are mandatory, so people would have to answer, um, if they do or do not. Read the following statements about farmers markets in general, and select if you strongly disagree, disagree, or neutral, agree, or strongly agree. Um, these are things that we pulled through research, um, that talk about what farmers markets are said to bring to different areas. Um, this, I believe, at the end, will compile in a chart or some sort of graph, so it'll be able to really show us, um, if the public finds value and sees that the farmers market brings economic value. Um, so I'm not going to read through all of these, but for example, farmers markets support small business, keep money circulating within the local economy, attract visitors with, which benefits nearby shops, restaurants, and services. Do people think that's definitely true? Do they think that's not true at all of farmers markets? We're going to find out. So there's a couple of different things here, community and social value, health and environmental value, cultural and identity value, um, and again, it'll show us a, a graph at the end. The next question, in 2023, town council voted to build a permanent farmers market structure on Hickock Street in downtown Christiansburg. Do you feel the Christiansburg Farmers Market belongs downtown on Hickock Street? The market belongs downtown, but it does not have to be on Hickock Street? The farmers market does not belong downtown? I have no opinion or other location, so anywhere else that anyone would like to see, and we'll compile those answers. Um, if you hit other location, uh, there will be a pop-up that says, okay, where would you like it to be? If you hit something else, it'll just take you to the next question. Um, and these are, both surveys are very short. Some town council members have questioned if the town should be responsible for running a farmers market. Do you feel the town should continue running and organizing the Christiansburg Farmers Market? Yes or no? Um, do you feel like a permanent farmers market and gathering space structure adds value to the town of Christiansburg? So one star meaning no value, five stars meaning significant value? What area farmers markets do you frequently attend, if any? And then the last question, do you feel a successful farmers market with a permanent structure could be a benefit to our, or to tourists? Um, all of these questions are based off of information that we were given in the work session, for what you all wanted to know from the public, um, in order to make the most informed decision on how to move forward, so. And then I'll go over the next one, and then, um, we can see if you all have any questions or changes. So this one is for our small businesses, this is not going to go out to our larger businesses. Um, basically, we're just trying to understand their small business perspective, and how the farmers market may or may not have implications on that. So the first question, again, mandatory, what Christiansburg business do you own, business or businesses? And then they will type that answer. Which area of Christiansburg is your business located? And then they can select which area. Um, this is similar to the last survey, so read the following statements and select if you agree, disagree. And I am going to read through these, just, uh, for awareness. So the first question, I believe a farmers market is good for the economic vitality of Christiansburg. Do you agree, disagree? I believe a permanent farmers market and gathering space structure is good for small business in Christiansburg. Having a permanent farmers market and gathering space structure near my business would create a weekly destination, bringing foot traffic and potential buyers to support my business and others nearby, either through sales or brand awareness. Um, this question, just as a side note, we were talking about, um, how one of our coworkers knows a downtown attorney, um, from just going to an event downtown and seeing the office. So we thought that, um, it would be a good idea to include brand awareness in there as well. I believe having a permanent farmers market and gathering space could be an added positive experience for Christiansburg tourists. I see farmers market vendors as healthy competition. I believe vendors of the Christiansburg Farmers Market should continue to be exempt from town business license requirements. So those are both of the surveys, um, I think we covered everything that was discussed in the meeting, but I am definitely open to questions, or if there's something that you feel like is not covered, um, that we could revisit.
Do you, uh, do you plan on surveying the current farmers market vendors?
We've already surveyed the current farmers market vendors, we did that at the start of the year. Um, we asked them for information on what location, uh, they preferred, but this was before we had moved to the park, this was very early on. Um, we were not pa, planning on sending another survey to the vendors, because there's so few of them, and because we've already sent a survey this year, so
Okay.
We don't want to inundate people, and per our conversation during the work session, it seems like what we, the end goal is to, for council to be able to have the public's input to decide where we even want the farmers market, and if we even want to be in the business of running a farmers market.
Okay.
Yeah, do, from the survey, I think the business owners would understand that they're competing with people who aren't paying for licenses, but do they also understand that they're not having to provide insurance or pay for that space to run their business as they're competing with their local business owners?
I'm not sure that they do understand that. It was my impression from the work session that town council and staff were going to revisit if that's the direction that we want to go. It seems like we want some adjustments made there. So I I didn't include that because I felt like it seems like we're going to change that in some way or another. But um, I can try to figure out a way to include that if council feels that it's appropriate, but that this isn't about awareness as much as it is about asking. So I can ask, did you know?
It's hard to make decisions without all of the information though as a business owner. Those would be important things for me to know, that the people that I was competing for and that the town is establishing and providing a place for them to do business for free. Is that really harming? How do they feel about that?
So do you want me to include in the last question then, instead of saying about the business licenses? Do you want me to say to continue not having to pay for the business licenses and the insurance?
Yeah, because um, you know, I didn't know that until this last meeting.
Me either.
And it was an epiphany to me, but if I was competing with that, that would be a problem for me.
Yeah.
You know, if the person right beside me had a free space and I was paying for my hard space and insurance and employees and, you know, all of those things that businesses require.
Right.
And um, the money largely is going through the, to the county, not to the town. And the people running those vending places are largely not Christiansburg business owners. So I would like to know what the business community feels, knowing the facts.
Yeah, I can edit that last question.
I would like to see a lot more fact on that, too. There is another item that I really, really feel that it needs to be included in.
Okay.
There is a lot of details about why starting downtown and all this stuff and everything. Obviously, it doesn't work out with the vendors. We have to give answers to the citizens of Christiansburg because one of the biggest things is always the same thing. I've been in here for a while now, and it's always, we want Saturdays, we want, well, the vendors already said they're not going to come to Christiansburg on Saturday. So we got to make it more clear to the citizens of Christiansburg that Waze is not going to be available, that we don't have, I I think when we put it out there to give people ideas of downtown, we really have to be more specific on which locations the town does actually own. Because a lot of people come out with great ideas, like the Sherman Building or the Waze again or older. I mean, there is all kinds of places or the corner one over there by El Bronco, which was a gas station. I mean, people are going to come out with a whole bunch of answers that you're probably not even going to realize existed.
Right.
And so another one is the Starlight and everything else. And so I think we got to stick out with what we own. Some of the ones that come out to my mind is Depot Park, which obviously I don't think nobody's going to go there for a farmer's market. You got the Wells Fargo Drive-Thru, which we purchased, we actually own that. That would be a great place to have a real platform if we wanted to do something like that. And obviously Hickok Street, which I think has always been a street. But another thing that I really
Sorry, can I answer that first before we go to the next question or?
Oh, can I, can I just continue with this part and then we'll go back?
Yeah, I'll take a note.
And then another thing that I'm really concerned as far as like the cause involved with this. I think we have to tell citizens of Christiansburg, they are, they should have the right to know what will the cost be associated by us continuing this this venture downtown on Hickok Street? Because if it's going to cost us from anywhere from seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to a million dollars, and it's still going to cost the town over half of a million dollars for an investment additional to what is already being invested to take care of a stormwater. But if it's an extra amount of money and we have to pay for that structure and the vendors don't come because I really, you know, we were talking to Brad the other day. He has a hard time. There was not enough visibility. There is a lot of problems on Hickok Street as far as that goes. Then we're still kind of, we may still lose the money even from ARPA funds, which that was the reason why we decided to do on Hickok Street, which was two hundred and fifty thousand. It wasn't an ARPA, I'm sorry. It was ARC grant. Was that correct? So from the ARC grant, and we go and spend all this money and still doesn't work on Hickok Street. We're going to look really bad. And I think from my perspective, we should give that information to the citizens of Christiansburg when we're doing that survey. Are we willing to invest this money for a location that may not be liable, you know, later on?
liable, yeah.
Yeah. What was the stipulation, the fifteen percent increase in revenue? Where did I hear that? Randy?
What do you mean, stipulation for fifteen percent?
Hit the microphone, son.
Increase, yeah, increase in revenue for the farmer's market for the, is the, Rheta, can you help?
It was fifteen businesses. Fifteen businesses.
Hit the microphone, please.
Fifteen businesses, so.
So we would have to increase by or have fifteen?
Fifteen vendors. They would have to prove that they
Could sustain.
Sustained, yes, so.
And we have how many now?
Seven. Eleven.
Eleven? Is that what I heard in the last?
It varies anywhere from seven to eleven, depending on.
If if they do change throughout the year, I think they would count them if they came within the year, though, I would believe. Because you do have seasonal
We're getting into a entire discussion about the farmer's market, which we're not ready to have yet until we get the results of the survey.
Can I respond to some of those?
Yes, if you'd like to, but I'm not going to carry this thing on much longer.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we did discuss about how much information we wanted to give out in the surveys, but it's really important to us not to sway the public's opinion. We feel that town council is responsible for making this very important decision, and you all are the ones considering all of the nitty-gritty details. Um, and we give, you know, public the information that they need. They're able to watch the central business district meeting. And during our promotion of the surveys, we are going to encourage people to do that so that they can see all that. But to inundate a survey with all this background information that a lot of people aren't going to understand feels like we would be leaning them in some sort of direction, and we really aren't trying to do that. All we're trying to figure out with the survey, the intent of the survey is to say, what are your thoughts on it being downtown? And then town council decides what is the best location. Not that the public is saying this is, you know, what has to happen. It's just you see what the public wants, and then you all make the best decision based off of that information.
But we have to deal with budget and is the taxpayers' money that we use? And so from, I have a different opinion as far as
We're not going to invite this thing.
But I'm just saying, I do think that we should give a little bit of more information as far as what we're voting for because it's great that when we allow people to have the ability to have all these options, obviously, I want a lot of farm, if there was no cause involved, great. Have a farmer's market every day, everywhere, and everything, you know what I mean? But if there is a cause involved with that,
We hope that they watch
We need to make sure that the citizens know that information because, like I said to you, I would love farmer's market every day.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council? Would you like, any, can I get any input from the rest of council?
I like, I like the surveys. I think that they get to the information that we asked you to collect, and it's a short amount of time. So I don't want to make a lot of changes to this. I think it gives us the information that we need. And we're trying to make this decision quickly because we have to move on that grant. So I think we need to get this out.
And I, I agree with Tanya, and I, and with what you said, I, I think we, if we give them all this background data that we know, we're going to try to lead them in a certain direction. And if they come back and they say wage, they say Starlight, they say whatever, we compile that data, and we know the facts, and that's why we're electing, sit up here and make these decisions.
Can I ask something?
I'm going to let the rest of council speak. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, I'd like to survey. I mean, once again, we are getting these citizens' feelings, you know? Like you said, we don't want to guide them or lead them. You know, we want you to say, yeah, because we want to go here. Tell us what you like, then we're going to make the final, well, whoever's up here when time comes will make that final decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowman, anything else to add?
I'll make that change on the question you suggested.
Mr. Jenkins, any last thoughts?
I don't have a dog in the fight much longer, but data is always good. And as someone who used to be an employee working within the farmer's market arena, I think you want to make sure you consider all those options very carefully before you make a drastic change, whichever way that may be. So I I like the approach.
Ms. Hicks, one more question.
I have, um, as far as like the food trucks and stuff, I didn't get a lot of information regarding this the last time. Can you specify a little bit of how, because I think that to me is important. When I see like the other park that we're having right now, the farmer's market, I don't know if we have had food trucks there, but let's first say we have food trucks there. And then all of a sudden, I am going to stop going to maybe Bull and Bones or other places because we have these food trucks in there. So I don't want to compete with those businesses that have spaces.
Right.
I, my biggest thing is to definitely not compete with other businesses. And talking from a person that, you know, owns more than, you know, one business or whatever, but this may affect more than one person and stuff, so I don't know. Do I have to say that whole conflict thing or whatever? But, uh, but what I'm saying is I do not, it's not just competition for my businesses, it's for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, and with the business license thing or whatever, like Mrs. King was saying, I think she's right on it.
Yeah, we discussed that, and we kind of came down to looking at a a free market and just trying to stay out of it as much as we can and not leading people with questions of, would you feel like a threat if there was this business here? Um, and just keeping it more generic so that they can decide whichever direction that they'd want to go. So we really tried to, and it's hard. It was hard for me because I know where I want the farmer's market. But we really tried to make sure that the survey for both groups of people is very unbiased and just lets the receiver of the survey be able to decide, and then you all can do with that what you choose to.
Are you going to provide all that information that you posted at the very beginning as far as like the downtown and all the things and everything under that? Or you're just making it simple for people to answer the questions?
I'm going to provide the surveys, and I'm going to provide a link for the recent work session and encourage people before they're taking the survey to take a look at the work session so that they can, it can be their responsibility. We, we can't, you know, we can do our best to guide people, but we can't make people, you know, watch or read or do their research. So we're going to encourage people to watch the work session. We hope that they do, and then they, we hope that they answer the survey accordingly.
Very good, thank you very much. Council reports, Mr. Bishop.
No report.
Ms. Jenkins. I'm sorry, Ms. Hicks. Get my people confused here. No report. Uh, Ms. Hockett.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Wilson.
Nothing.
Ms. Bowman.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yeah, I got something, yeah. No, I I just wanted to say thank you again to all my colleagues up here and to the community as well. Going back to 2018 as a staff member here first, when Brad was on council among others, and really enjoying this community for what it's worth, which it has a lot to offer. So it's been my privilege and honor to serve as a staff member, working with Randy and the team, and then later on as a council member for the place to be in Christiansburg, Virginia. So I just want to say thank you to everyone here, all my colleagues here, and to the community as well. This is going to be a a missed community for myself going forward. And so I really treasure the seven years, seven plus years of of living here in Christiansburg as well. So I just wanted to say thank you one last time to all of you and look forward to keep it in touch.
Thank you.
You can always come back.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, make a motion request for a closed meeting. Under Code of Virginia two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments of or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of a pending town council vacancy and discussion of the town manager position.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Abstain.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, that's five, oh, and one. Who will go into closed session? Who will take about three, four minute break? Mr. Jenkins, you are excused from further.
Sounds good.